Go ahead.
I had Linda mention that you can tip your microphones forward just so she can hear what the maps can also we have a little upgrade to our sound system, our server's been changed out, so, thank you.
Thank you everyone for coming, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. If anybody has any additional thoughts or corrections, if you'd be kind enough to share them with Linda. Otherwise, I will look for a motion to be approved, please.
Has he had a question about the storages on the north side of the current building, is that right?
South side.
My understanding would be on the south side, yes.
Yes, south side.
We can get that adjusted. Good catch.
Other than that, I'd make a motion to approve with the change for note that it's south side instead of north side.
We have a motion with a correction, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll have the minister take the parole. Next item this evening, public hearings, bannered conditional use permits.
So, including your packet, I have a memo that covers a number of the items that we're talking about tonight, I just put them all into one. So, we did include a lot of information from when the CUP was previously issued a couple of years ago. So, you can see maps of the original plans and things like that. Additionally, you can see the resolution that we generated, that we would anticipate utilizing at city council if they chose to, you know, if we toward a pause recommendation, if we chose to forward that to them. You can see the items that would be included, and a lot of those lines are what we had talked about last month, some of those items. And I did, as I highlighted with chairman, we did have a few issues in getting actual copies of the plans and things that we would like to have seen. For example, the parking plan, I know that, I don't expect it necessarily to be a totally complicated one, just sort of a laying out of parking and it's possible that Mr. Standard will come and have those items for us now, but, so you have all those items, including your packet. Other than that, comments, the biggest one that I saw was this dustproof condition, which does seem to be something that we would probably want to define a little bit more intensively before we would approve anything at that time.
Mr. Standard isn't here, with all that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, if anybody has anything they'd like to share on the matter. If you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium, give us your name and address, please.
As far as on my end of things with the lot?
No, sir, this is Mr. Standard's conditional use permit.
For the storage on the?
Must be a lip reader when I just have a hard time.
I don't do a good job screaming either, so I'll.
There are agendas, so you can see when you're up.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Assuming that's not why your gentleman came this evening, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. We don't have everything we need really to.
No, I mean, as I said, I mean, I think, you know, I guess the only other thing I could say is, you know, do those, if you look on those pages that have got the resolution, I think it very clearly talks about what I would expect the council to, what the council would want. You know, are there any, is there anything else that you are looking for in terms of the qualifications? And then, if there is, then we'll add those in, and if there's not, then, as I said, I think defining those maybe a little bit more thoroughly would be beneficial for us and for the applicant, just because I want him to know exactly what he needs to do. You know, otherwise, we're just creating a problem a couple of years down the road again.
So, we want to start with our dustproof condition and try to hash that out a little bit better, clarify that a little bit.
I think that's probably the way to go, I did just email out one simple definition of dustproof. And if you, sorry, I'll read it too here, and this is just, this is my, my understanding of when I used dustproof in the past. It refers to an application of a thin layer of asphalt all followed by a layer of small rock, which provides a new wear surface on a road, dustproofing protect applications of asphalt from between forests. Maintenance help extends life of pavement to reduce cost. In this case, you know, we may not require him to seal coat that, but that is one definition I think of when I think of, you know, because it really will reduce the, you know, by putting that oil down, it's going to reduce dust quite a bit, so. I mean, there are other things, for example, I know what they use on township roads, you know, the chemicals they use. You know, if he would commit to even doing that every year, you know, something like that probably would certainly improve what we're looking at. I mean, and I'd be open to something that, obviously, that's going to be more cost effective than to avoid.
Well, I guess I look at this, and whatever he would want to do is almost kind of a temporary fix here until he continues building out his buildings on this piece of land.
Right.
So, I guess I could use that in trouble, and Chris, what would be a viable temporary way of managing dust on the site?
I guess the only thing I would say, Monty, probably, I think this too, you know, if you were to put down some type of a heat gravel and the oil, I think it's going to get tore up each, just returning.
The weight of the items, sure.
Flowing.
Yeah.
Weight, I think I would, like Dwayne, I would be more into that than, than asphalt.
Okay.
This is just very dirt, as it sits on, right, I mean, there's just nothing there. Probably some gravel, but not much yet.
There's gravel where the buildings are at.
Right.
You would think he would want to clear off the black dirt and put base down, so when he is ready to build his other buildings, it isn't like he has to take this all out to start over again. So, I would think he would want a substantial base in there.
That would make sense, right.
That's what I would do.
But if he's trying to do it as cheap as possible, he's just going to bring in some truckloads of gravel and be done.
And that's kind of what I'm afraid that's going to happen. If he doesn't take the black, doesn't put down a good base, even for parking, it's going to get to be a shithole.
Yeah.
Well, seriously.
We'll put that in the minutes.
Yeah. That's okay.
I'll expand Linda's vocabulary.
I guess the question I have is he didn't, he didn't finish with his conditional use permit already, and yes, he's in asking to change it, but it sure seems like the burden is on the city to make sure that somebody's doing something versus them coming, because he should have come in and said, "I am not going, I'm not building out my units as fast, can I have an extension of my conditional use permit?"
Right.
And he didn't do that, he came in and kind of said, "Well, gee, that's not going, I need something else now." And I'm just worried that, you know, whatever.
You think that's a bad precedent?
Yeah, well, I mean, on the light of things that I've been involved with since my short time on the planning commission, it's the burden of conditional use should be on the tenant, not the city.
Well, and I mean, as I was telling, you know, Tom, I mean, that's been, I was trying to get these items from him even, it's been a burden on, you know, Linda's time, basically, where I'm saying, Linda, go email him and try and dig out these items, because he's just not bringing them. So, no, I share that concern for sure.
Yeah. So, I mean, to me, it's almost, he can have a one-year, you know, extension or something. One-year application, and he, you know, he has to come in next year, and if not, there's a fine or some, you know.
That's the tough part about the conditional use permit, is I guess, putting that timeline on it too.
But he's asking for a unique situation and what he had already asked for.
Right.
I think mother nature's going to have a bit of an impact on the timeframe, I mean, if he's trying to capture the benefit of people looking to park their RVs for the winter time, he's got.
Two months.
Yeah, where he's in a position to capture that opportunity, so.
But you could come back and say, "Well, put all your pads in and finish your parking lot out, you're not building all the buildings," but.
Well, right, I mean, if it was Rochester, as a city in the metro, that's probably what they would say, they'd just say, "We don't really care, you know, this is what you said you were going to build, either build it or we're going to deny the whole thing."
Right, I mean, you know.
I don't want to go there.
I don't either, but it's the, you know, this is going to rear its head again
Yeah.
in some fashion, and, you know, you have enough people running around trying to find out who's not following their conditional use permits.
Well, we don't have to get this to them.
No, no.
So, that's something I always think about too.
No, but I'd like to, because I understand his dilemma.
Oh, sure, I got it.
He's trying to generate revenue so he can build more buildings.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's kind of this catch 22, but, but he didn't realize what his original commitment was. And I guess that's the part that I'm worried about, you know.
If I could make a suggestion or something, since I was emailing Mr. Standard today, and I'm not sure that the notice, it went to Captain Storage at the address on the tax statement. But when I look at that address and his address from the meeting before, it's not the same. So, I don't know if he has a partner that didn't let him know the meeting was tonight, and I'm not sure.
Is it terrible address?
Yeah.
That's the one my daughter rented, and that's the one where all the payments went to.
Yeah, that's what's on the tax statement.
And I think it is a partner.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, you know, if you want, you've held the public hearings, so you've done that, you can table it until next month.
He was at the last meeting, he knew this was going to be coming up, so.
Well, you can email him, so.
Yeah.
He's got to assume some responsibility, so, I think that there's two things we can do. One is the address is dustproof, and then two, table this until he gets on everything else.
I don't think we can go any further than that, we don't have a completion to do it.
Okay. Makes sense to me. All right, so dustproof, back to that.
Colin, your thoughts?
Well, I think kind of, I think kind of in agreement of what has already, has already been said here tonight, so. I don't really have any more to add. Yeah, I think we, you know, need some more information, sound like.
So, either a choice of inch and half sewer rock, or road rock with chloride.
And do we need to go any further than that?
I mean, do we need to specify depth? Do we need to specify that he turns in receipts that he has actually put chloride on? I don't know.
Yeah, as far as.
We don't require that the other two businesses that are on that road to dustproof their gravel parking lots?
But that was a part of his conditional use to put in a storage facility. Les must have put in a permissible use which allowed for a blacktop parking, or for a gravel parking lot.
Imagine the dust control is for the other storage containers that people got people.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that.
Yeah.
Do we accept either option and/or the recommendation from the owner? What reasons need to be defined before we issue a conditional use permit?
I myself would like to see his actual plan, what he's going to do, what he's going to do for proper screening, what he's going to do for a parking plan, what he's going to do for proper surfacing. Get that to us, then we tweak it to our liking?
Sure.
And then, do you approve this? And if he doesn't, I guess we deny it.
I think in our discussion last month, I think we indicated to him, you know, a recommendation as to what the dustproofing could consist of.
Yes.
So, it's up to him to table it from there.
Yes, exactly.
He's got to figure something out, and once he does, let us know.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's being more complicated than that.
Right.
It's almost like he figured out that maybe this isn't going to work.
Yeah.
Just left it.
Or maybe the opportunity to park RVs there wasn't, wasn't needed to be to, I have no idea. Expect to like.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, you've got to put a fence up, and a fence, a fence costs money that you're going to have to be able to use in the long term.
Yeah, I think that it makes sense to kind of specify the performance of what needs to be achieved, but then the methods to get there can be up to him, you know, there's different ways to do a dustproof for parking area. We don't need to specify a particular method.
I do believe dustproofing leaves it open to interpretation.
I mean, what I'm hearing is there's maybe two options there that we might have, you know, and so that's okay, you know, if he can bring in one of those too, or say that. And I mean, that's, you know, as you said before, like, so Linda emailed him and she, you know, she seeded me on it specifically, like, "These are the four things you need to bring in, we didn't get any of them." So, we will, we can do that again, that's what we'll do, you know, and say, "Hey, we need you to, you know, these are the four things that they wanted again, we need to bring those in, or this isn't going to proceed." Because otherwise, I don't want to waste your guys' time on this anymore than we have to. I mean, some of the other things, you know, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, grading site plan, lighting plan, parting plan, you know, and he can give us what he's going to do for dustproof and screening, I mean, and there you go. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, Linda, it sounds like that's the direction the board wants to take. So, we're going to follow up with an email tomorrow and let them know and know, but I mean, after that, I'm not going to chase his tail. It's on him, not on us.
Right.
Okay.
So, I'll move to table.
Any more discussion? We've got a motion in a second, but anybody else have any? A motion in a second, table, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Mine.
I did.
Paul Darren did, okay. Thank you.
I'm smiling. Next up, public hearing for minor subdivision, request by Brad Clemmons, Plaza 57, to split off some land.
So, we've got that on my memo under number four, it's just an update that Mr. Clemmons is requesting, is working with Mr. Carlson to split off some property, which will be now known as the, we now know as the Plaza 57 property. After reviewing this, this should allow for proper water distribution, and this is going to allow for the full use of Mr. Carlson's property. So, we're recommending approval of a minor subdivision to allow for that property to be sold.
So, this eliminates that strip, correct?
Well, that, that strip will let me put my drainage in it?
Right.
And just slow the water down.
Right.
So, that's, my other option was, years ago, was to put in a system, you know, under my parking lot, and it just, more maintenance, this way it's going to be, I don't know, just kind of like a rain garden type thing, and then I've got a bore underneath the driveway, like a six inch pipe.
This is what we talked about originally, but she wouldn't go for it, correct?
Yep.
Arden?
This is what we talked about originally, but she wouldn't go for boring underneath the driveway.
Well, it all started back, you know, when I went to Green Bay with the shop called, they didn't want me to build new buildings there, they thought it blocked their view, so they were against it. And, so my other option was to, you know, put something under the parking lot or do something, I had to do something, I guess. So, you know, I've been, then I worked with the owners out east, and then they let it go, and then I talked to the bank, and then they sold it to a syndicated auction company or whatever. I know Brad a little bit, so I went and talked to him, and, you know, he thought, you know, 35 feet, you know, you can't really build anything on it. I explained to him, and it sounds like he's ran into that before, where he's had to contain some water, and so he's willing to sell me the lot.
Basically, all we're doing is just creating another parcel.
Right.
So, if there was already a parcel, he would have just been able to sell it. Because in this case, because it is in a separate parcel, we're just going to create that new PID number, the county's going to, it'll be just a small parcel, and then, you know, Mr. Carlson may acquire it now for his water. So, as you said, we didn't have any, in fact, it helps alleviate some of the concerns that I've had about drainage on the main road there. And I know Brandon's had some of those same concerns too, to the city engineer, so, I think this would be a win-win, really.
Yep, I agree.
I did get a, the okay from Linda and the DNR, and I know Les down here ran it by Brandon, and Brandon said, "Yeah, as long as they're okay with it, we're, we're fine," so.
By the way, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone has anything they'd like to share on the matter, if you're kind enough to come up to the podium, please.
I guess, did anybody call in or write in, or any objections from anybody, Linda?
Oh.
Get your name and address from, before you begin, or do you have?
Ron Carlson, 616-98257th Avenue, Mantlev.
Thank you, sir.
We don't have any correspondence?
I don't believe so, no.
Gentlemen, your thoughts?
I'm fine with it, like, it's the smart thing to do.
Yep.
It's what we want, it's what we wanted to do in the first place. But we should make Ron squirm just a little bit.
I mean, the only, the only that I know that did come up with that parking lot was, I think, originally in the plan that you approved, it was a roller curve. And it was not the hard curve that they, I know it was not the hard curve that they put in, but at the same time, I think this will help alleviate that too, because we'll still be able to drain then, and it'll help fix that, so.
Yep.
There are no additional comments or questions, I will look for a motion, please.
I move to approve.
I'm going to abstain, just so we know.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you have one exception?
Yes. And just for the record, Linda, that motion would be to approve the minor subdivision, which will forward that to the city council for.
And it was Joe that seconded it?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Linda, when does this go to the council, and they've got the final say?
The 26th, is that the next meeting?
It would be. 26th?
Yeah, is that the fourth Wednesday?
The next city council meeting, that's.
Yeah.
And that would be on that, Linda?
Yep, that will be on the agenda for that meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John?
Yep.
Next up, potential revocation of images variance, no work performed, and variance not filed.
So, as part of the process that we've been trying to undergo is cleaning up some of these CUPs and variances that haven't been maintained or followed up as much, Linda alerted me of one that was approved back in 2017, which it was quite a, quite a divisive one at the time, apparently. In fact, I think the planning commission actually had, had denied this, and the city council chose to overrule it, which is their prerogative, of course. But I read through the packet and the information, and in essence, for this building, I guess they had asked for a variance to be able to grow the business, which of course makes sense, we want businesses to grow and have that ability to do so. But it seems that none, none of the work's been done, the business is obviously in a different position than it was at the time. So, Linda had asked me to bring it to you, to take a look and see whether you thought it would be appropriate to revoke the variance, having, you know, we typically do ask people to commence the work of a project within a certain time period, and different cities are different, a year, 18 months, something like that. Having not seen it be worked for three years, I know her concern was that a new owner might not be apprised of this, or might, you know, there might be an issue then, so.
That this was outstanding.
Right, that it was outstanding, so.
We've got more than this one variance out there, though, that hasn't been acted on.
Oh, sure.
I mean, is the thought process to go, start with the most recent variances that haven't been acted on, and work our way back four, five, six, seven years? Is it something over the?
Is that what you'd like to do?
I guess I'm trying to understand what the process is that has been started before I.
Well, my, my process is that when something's brought to my attention, I try to bring it to the board as soon as possible, because I obviously don't know, you know, all the variances that have or haven't been acted on. And unfortunately, I don't have as much time as I'd like to get out and take a look at some of these sites, or today I got to drive around and do the lawn sign inspection program, probably for the next two months I'll be doing that, but it's a nice day, so I didn't mind at all, it's going to be fun. But, but yeah, I think that makes sense, is to go and start running through, and I know Linda's got a lot of records, and we want to make sure we have thorough records too, that's the other thing that we really are stressing, is trying to have good records. The solution to this also going to be that our plan going forward is to change the fee schedule, as Brad recommended, and we talked about it at the previous planning commission, so that when CUPs and variances come in, you know, we are the ones that are actually going to make sure those get filed. So, you know, we'll be adding that fee, 46.50 or whatever it is, or maybe it'll be a little higher, because we have to count for time, Linda's time, or my time, or whoever goes up to the county, you know, that way we know that it took, because part of it is that some of these aren't even getting filed. So, the planning commission, you know, has a forward recommendation of the council, council approves it, you know, it sits, we had one, which one was that, Linda, where it, it sat for like three years, was that this one?
That was this one.
Sure, so this one, basically, you guys approved it, and it sat for a period of time, and it never, it never really got filed. So, now we're kind of like, well, what is the status of this now? I don't want a new owner to be confused and say, "Oh, I think I got a variance, but I don't know," and we ran into that with the city council's dealing with one right now, with a home purchase that they kind of made a change for, which we discussed too at the planning commission, so. Yeah, I think that would be a, that would be a fine plan, if we start going through and just reviewing and.
I guess, and I'd like everybody's feedback, you know, we kind of, we kind of have to go through everything, I don't think you can just do a one-off and, and, you know, the perception, I think, is you're kind of picking on somebody for doing that.
Sure.
And I guess, starting the conversation here, but if it's possible to contact the person that applied for the variance and say, "Hey, what's going on here?", the thought that the city are, we go ahead and.
It has been sent to him, and it was sent to the bank that owns the building.
Okay.
I received the one that was sent to the person back, and I have no comments from the bank.
You won't, you won't get in contact with them.
So, curious question, I mean, when we pass a variance, there's no, there's no time limit on it, and ultimately, if this would have been in the new process, it would have been recorded, and then been a permanent variance on the property.
That's right.
Is there, is there a, is, is that the right thing to be doing? Or is it that you're giving it a timeline, and then eventually either recording it or not recording it?
Yeah, I mean, I guess with variances, and that's why they're a little bit different from the CUPs, is that variance goes with the property. So, once it's granted and it's filed, you know, it's with that property forever, you know, until, you know, something changes dramatically. You know, in this case, if they had, if they had filed it, I don't think we would have any recourse, so I think that's, and that's maybe, it's your question. We won't have to go through every single variance, but what I'll end up doing is we'll get a list of all of them, and, you know, Linda or I can go, and we can go to the county and say, "This one gets filed, this one gets," you know, and we'll go down and we'll try and clean up the ones that haven't gotten filed, that are sitting there someplace, you know, if that makes sense. And it's going to cut down on that number dramatically. So, you're right, I'm not trying to pick on anybody.
Sure.
This one just popped up because, I don't, what did precipitate this, Linda, do you remember?
Oh, because the for sale sign in the window with the auction.
Oh, sure. She was concerned the building was going to.
I was concerned the building was going to be sold, I checked to see if it had been filed, it never had, so I suggested that we should probably
Take a look at it.
revoke this before whatever comes in there, and then all of a sudden, they can build the five feet within the property line, and you don't know if you want to do that with whatever business comes in.
No, no good to do with it, so. I get it. As long as we've got a process in place, you know.
Yeah.
But, nothing.
You sure? Well, we don't have to take any action on it tonight.
No.
We just brought this up to you.
No, I think, yeah.
I think we should.
I think we should, because I'm the one that really pushed for this variance, so, I, I understand what happened to the owner and his plans that he did have, and what happened for him to pull out. He had a good plan, he had good intentions, but it just didn't work, and we should have been keeping track of this, like you said. There should be a time limit on these variances, if you don't do anything with a certain amount of time, either come in to have it renewed, or else it's gone.
And I guess that's my question is, is what I'm hearing, we're suggesting is saying, if a variance goes through, we'll go file it at the county and it's done. Now, that variance goes with that property all the time, which I don't think is a bad idea, but then, why aren't we saying, you know, telling somebody that, hey, this is either going to be vacated, or the variance is going to be omitted, or whatever proper word, or there will be a fee because it will be recorded, and this will be put on the tax.
Yeah, no, I think that was part of, I mean, Linda attempted to contact the property.
Yeah.
Ideally, what would have happened is they would have come in here tonight, and they would have said, "Hey, yeah, I've got these issues, but I plan on getting it filed, and I still plan on doing them."
Right.
So, you're absolutely correct, like, you know, we don't want to be willy-nilly about it, and that's why we do the, the open session, so that everybody can say what they feel about it. I would love it if they told me, "Hey, I plan on doing it, and here's what we're going to do." Because I mean, you know, to Monty's point, I want to support the businesses as much as we can. You know, we have a limited amount of good space in town here for commercial and for, you know, that kind of thing.
Anything original? No? With that said, I will look for a motion, please, or do we even have to go through that process? Do we just?
Well, I mean, your motion would be to recommend to the city council, one way or the other. In this case, your motion would be to revoke that based on the non-completion and non-filing of the project.
I'll make the motion to revoke, revoke the variance per images.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Oh.
Yeah, I abstained when it went through.
Yep.
Keeping the same format, I think.
Understood. Next up this evening, potential annexation request for Passon Meadows Center.
And this is informational, so the annexation will go to the city council, but I do like to try and keep the planning going forward in line, partly because I'm very sensitive to the road situation, which we've run into before. When these subdivisions start coming in, we wanna make sure there's proper entrances and exits to all these, you know, divisions. So, basically, this is a very small piece of pie. So that'll get included in here. Yeah, so you do have a copy of that petition of annexation, which is reasonably straightforward, because the property owner's the one that submitted that, so it doesn't require a lot of written rule. He's the one asking, and he owns a hundred percent of the property. My biggest issue with this, and I don't know, you kinda look up here, basically what they're doing is they're bringing in the bottom southern, maybe third of this parcel right here. And now, when I talk to them, I talk to Les Conway, because that's, you know, Matthew's engineer for this one, I recommend it to them that they bring the whole parcel in now, because I just felt like it would make more sense, and it's, you know, one hearing instead of three, or two, you know, they're really gonna save money in the long run. And the tax difference on the property is, you know, maybe two dollars a year, because it would still be farmland, and the city, this would be tiny, you know, tiny difference. There are also some other structural issues because of the way the stormwater works here. Apparently, I'm not Brandon, but, you know, stormwater on one side starts going one way, and the other side goes the other way, so by extending this, and just putting three homes in, it seems kind of a short-sighted step, in my opinion, for the overall grand scheme of things. But I just wanted to bring it to you, because I want you to be aware of what was going on. We have an issue up there, where we're gonna have to find ways for folks in that subdivision to get out. You know, right now, there's only one entrance, an exit in. It's a road that's in very poor condition, that's very possibly gonna be our street project next year, which'll mean that Dwayne's gonna have a lot of fun when they come through his neighborhood.
They're gonna be driving down the bike path.
Well, there's a good chance that that's a possibility, and I know the school, you know, had some opposition, they don't really want us cutting through there, which I guess I understand, at the same time, it does need to come out somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
The other issue would be extending it up here, you know, you're gonna have some pushback from the township folks up here, but in the fullness of time, this substandard road is not sufficient to, you know, have this many houses. It just doesn't work.
Right.
You know, obviously, that turn, that, at speed, that turn is, you know, a crack accident. You know, there's a possibility that you could, you know, connect in here, but that's always gonna have to be a secondary. I mean, that is like an emergency access, basically, because of the grid.
Yeah, that is.
So I mean, that would, you know, that might be something where you, maybe very temporarily, you could do that, but in the fullness of time, you know, bringing it out over here, and bringing it, making it into the north, makes the most sense to me. You know, and we can deal with the school, we were gonna have to, but I just wanted you to know that, you know, this is not ideal for me, situation, and so my recommendation would be to advise them to bring the entire parcel in, because we don't have to accept the petition.
Don't we have a transportation map somewhere that identifies a potential road?
There are several connecting...
To fifty-seven?
There's several different iterations of that, and because of different opposition from the school or from the township, there has been different pushback on it, but, yeah.
Thank you.
That's what they want, but what we need is two different things.
Was this last one just north of that property, north of the church?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I think that that's what Brandon was looking at, trying to slide it in there, and kind of, you know, maybe it'd almost be like a street going into a parking lot, and then going out, kind of on the other side, kinda like the school has right now, but, I don't know, I just wanted you to know, because I do think it's important. I need your feedback always, because, you know, you guys have lived there a lot longer, and you know what those have been, you know, but I, I think we should be aware that that's, it's gonna need to come out somewhere. Otherwise, you're just gonna have a real mess up there. And as it keeps growing on that side, it's not gonna get easier.
Why do we anticipate opposition from the township toward north?
Well, I don't necessarily have, I don't expect it from them so much as from the developer. I think that he's, what I've been told, he'd like to cul-de-sac that off. I'm sure it's a cost thing, probably, but...
That isn't a general development plan from original.
Right.
Which one?
The north one?
Yeah, the north one.
We haven't vacated the master parkway, that extension of that road, at least.
No, but it's narrow. Right, if I remember right. So this was supposed to go along through here.
Yeah, always straight up, yep.
And it was, it was like it's some of these roadhead, and it was divided. Didn't happen, they gave back some of this property to here, and then this was supposed to go up into the two-seventieth or something, that one.
Yep, yep.
And there was a big fight about that. The neighborhood up there was...
But there's access there.
Yep, there is.
That was the original.
That was the original plan that I remember.
But yes, that road is...
We, I mean, we spent, I don't know, I think it was close to ten thousand dollars to patch it this year. You know, if that kinda money, you know, that's a chunk of a rebuild. So I mean, we have looked at options too, and some of that cost could be assessed to that neighborhood, which would make sense, because they're the users. You know, that would mean that it would cost the city a little bit less cash overall, and it's not gonna cost a lot. I mean, I don't know, we were trying to figure out exactly how many houses you've got up there, but, you know, if you've got a hundred houses, you've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, or two hundred thousand dollar project, and you're only assessing a third of that to the, you know, fifty thousand dollars, you know, you're not looking at a ton of money for households, you know, and for a lot of folks up there, I think they'd probably rather have the good road. The other issue that we have is the pond. So that pond was never built really properly either. It's a shallow pond, it's already filled in even more than it was. So we like to upsize that pond, because, you know, we know there's a lot of water issues up there, too. You know, the school is a good partner for a lot of things, but they don't necessarily wanna work on, they've got a pond a little further to the west on their property that really isn't quite up to standard either, but, and, you know, we'll work with them. You know, I think if we paid to fix it, they'd probably let us pay to fix it, but other than that, we know that we need to get our ponds in order, and we're gonna start trying to put it for one pond a year, just to bring them up to, you know, to dredge them and bring them up to grade. We don't really have the equipment, we have to hire somebody to do it. But, you know, right now, we have some of the ponds, they're just not, they're not functioning the way they should. So I mean, we own enough property there that we'd be able to soften that curve, I think probably by thirty or forty percent, which would be great, too, to be safer, so.
You know, I think you could almost argue with the size of that area, potential development, that both the fifty-seven and the north connection are warranted.
Well, and I mean, part of it, for me, if they're expecting to bring any, I mean, this is three lots, but at a point, we have to sort of say, you know, if you're gonna be building a larger number of lots, you know, we have to add those connections.
Yep.
At that point, like, it's not gonna necessarily be up to me, but I would almost say, we're not gonna give you a building permit until you show us how you're gonna do this, because otherwise, we're into, we're running into, you know, with some of our other developers, where we've kinda punted on it again, 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 and just let them build, and, you know, and I don't mean to penalize anybody, it just makes sense that we'd have another route out. You know, if you had other fifty houses up there, how do you make, how do you make that work?
Well, in our, you know, previous conversation we had with Laura, we talked about getting a transportation plan included in our comp plan.
Sure.
So, I mean, that, that's what drives it.
I would say that if you're asking him to annex the prop, the rest of the property in, that you're entitled to him to build on that property without any future access. I think if you allow him to bring in the three lots that he wants right now, because I know that's all the sewer can handle, and the rest of the sewer all goes the other direction, that then and now, you've got a little bit more leverage, that you can say, hey, we'll, we'll recommend this, and let's put in the three lots, but until, until somebody comes with another way out, you're not gonna be able to annex the rest of it.
Well, I could certainly see that.
Yeah.
You know, absolutely. I mean, I'm not trying to stop it, but I do think it's one of those ones where, in the past, you know, sometimes we let things go, and I mean, you just have to, you know, we don't have to always let people build. And we've got another hundred lots coming on in different parts of town next year. This isn't critical from the city's perspective.
Right.
Obviously, for this property owner, it is, and I respect that, so. Any other feedback? Well, I hope you don't mind, I do, I do like kinda get your guys' feedback on these, because I want you to know where we're going with things. I just think it's valuable to meet. So, we do have this annexation that'll be going to council, and then, I mean, I'm expecting to bring the Zed and the school one later this fall. Right now, the timeline that I've been told is about eighteen months, the new alternative ring center, but of course, that can change, that can shift, you know, who knows? Maybe upon a, I'll change my mind, wanna get back into it, so.
Okay. Zoning ordinance rewrite.
All right, so you've got my notes there. I thought it was really good last time, we had a good conversation, and I appreciate that. You know, Brad, Mr. Shive's got a lot of the notes that you've got, he's creating new overlays, and we did include in your packet, I think, that one that was not included last time, so that is that major priority change area. And the ones that were noted at the last meeting that were particularly effective are along that thirty-four corridor, and then along the north, sort of north, straight north section there, the trucking business. And I know, I just wanted this to be, you know, brought to you, you know, next month, we're expecting to have a public hearing for this, so that will allow us to start getting ready to finalize it. Just wanted to make sure you've got a list of those changes that were included there. We had some conversation last time about doing, what are we doing with those, you know, couple of properties that'll be, you know, affected dramatically by this, and the feedback that I've gotten has been that, for right now, we would look to allow that zoning that they have to currently continue. But if that's not what the planning commission is interested, I mean, some members have expressed that to me, but, you know, I, I think that in some ways, it would make sense to allow this stuff to happen naturally when people change business, but we don't have to.
We've got a section here that's not in the city yet, that potentially could be an extension, you know, at fifty-seven, connecting the Dollar General and the trucking company.
Sure.
All this could end up being general commercial.
Right. It's very possible that it could come in at a certain level, and that's why I said maybe it wouldn't be absolutely necessary if there's time to switch that, because we don't know what the final use will be. I mean, one thing we are looking at doing, I know the EDA is looking very hard at the property the city has on the southwest side of town, because they'd like to perhaps encourage some of these businesses to look at alternative locations on the periphery that might fit their business needs a little bit better than, you know, where they're gonna see some core growth. But that obviously takes money to build a, you know, a commercial park, or something like that, you know, some lots where somebody could shift their business, we'd have to help, help them with that, but I know that they're definitely talking about that now, which is great.
It's gonna be an interesting day when all those letters go on the map.
Right.
Anything else, Shevchenko?
Any other direction on those particular properties, and as I said, you know, we've identified a couple of them that in particular would be affected. But I mean, we control this process, so, you know, Brad can make a recommendation, it doesn't mean we necessarily have to say that's what we're gonna do, especially if we know it's gonna have a real impact on actual residents and homeowners, or business people in town. So I don't think, I feel comfortable with maintaining the current use of the structures. I think that you can, a lot of it just depends on how you classify things. You know, if, for example, like, we had a hard time identifying that one on the north side of town, to me, it's a logistics business, or a trucking, you know, it's a distribution business. Now, it may not be these loading things out that site, but I think if you clarify it that way, then it fits the use. It's just a matter of, if we're not gonna clarify it that way, then we gotta figure out, how are we gonna clarify it? And that, that's where the difficulty becomes. But I haven't had any complaints from anyone about it, and it's been there for a long time, so.
Yeah, I guess trying to force a rezone on somebody for...
Any reason?
I guess I would have a little bit of a hard round with that.
Sure.
You know, in many ways, we're kinda here to prevent that from happening, you know, I don't want...
Well, the biggest issue for me is when I don't have any other options for them, really.
Yeah.
You know, if I had a better option for them, and I said, hey, we've got these, you know, five acre lots available, and this commercial park on the southwest side of town, where you're gonna have better access to the highway anyways, you know, hopefully, they would be encouraged to, you know, consider that. The other thing that we don't know yet, Dwayne mentioned, we don't know what the use is gonna be around them yet. You know, we, we expect certain things, but we don't know, and once, I mean, if it wasn't circled by residential, I think they have a very strong case to say, hey, you know, it's time to make that, that switch, you know?
Well, we still got the comprehensive plan to guide...
Sure.
...in decisions, you know, if there is a change of ownership out there, or a change of usage...
Right.
...for the comp plans, we always have that to fall back on.
Right.
Any other comments? Anything else for us to discuss this evening, sir?
No, I just wanna highlight, so right now, I think we're expecting that zoning rewrite public hearing in September. There are a number of subdivisions that are gonna be coming up, too. We have a Big O' Voight that's gonna be coming to city council, we also have Meadow Brook, which is likely to become the council this fall. We'll see what the process looks like on that. They're asking for an expedited kind of process, because I think they've gone through the, they'd already gone through this process to a large degree at the previous time. Also, let you know, there's, there's a chance I probably won't be at the next planning commission meeting. I am getting married, and I'm gonna do a honeymoon, so, anyway, so Linda will be in charge, so, you know, you can, we'll have like five public hearings that night, you know, and I'll come back, and I'll just be like, oh, I don't know what they did, but, anyway, I think we're doing really well, and we're gonna do a good, try and get caught up on these variances, like COPs this fall, so.
Not to be terribly nosy, but where's your honeymoon?
Uh, well, we'll see. Right now, it's looking like Dominican Republic. I told her, I said, are you sure you wanna do that?
I have no...
She said, she said, let's try it anyways.
There's always Waseoja.
Yeah, yeah, we're it.
It's a beautiful part of the world, I've only been there once, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't have the planning and zoning meeting town.
Would you like to do that? Well, I can maybe zoom in, or something like that, I don't know, I mean, from the beach, I can, you know...
We can't exactly drive down, but I...
Well, it is in the same time zone, so it does work very well.
That's true.
Do a destination way.
Let's do a destination way.
Well, this, this, uh, whole thing is, you know, it is what it is. Her mom was, uh, her mom was...
Right. I want her to watch this video.
No, 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 no.
I have, I have a question for everybody. There's word going around that City Rochester is going to outlaw cul-de-sacs.
Yep, that's, that's happening, yep. Well, I mean, the, the other word is that they're actually gonna turn those properties over to the, I mean, that's, they're gonna become private streets. They're not gonna be maintained, they're just gonna turn them over to the adjoining property owners, basically, for maintenance and snowplowing and everything. But they're twenty-eight, but they have a twenty, twenty-eight million dollar butter duster right now, which is amazing.
So why are cul-de-sacs more maintenance? I mean, outside of, I mean, I understand...
Well, I think Rochester's perspective is that they don't serve anybody except for the property owners. And that's kind of, like, we have it here where we have private roads, and a number of them are cul-de-sacs. I think that's kinda what they're saying, as well, it doesn't serve the public, it serves, you know, the people that live on it. I, I can't, that just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but you let them build it one time, how does that work? But, you know, well...
I mean, I know myself, living in the cul-de-sac, it takes the guys a lot longer to clean that street in the winter.
Right.
You know, and it, yes, there is less traffic, it is more attractive to have a house in the cul-de-sac, especially with kids, but I can see the cost to the city.
So you wanna, you think, you wanna reconsider that here?
I don't know, I just wanted to hear what everybody thought.
I think Linda, Linda agrees. I thought, don't you, Linda, you think it'd be a good idea, don't you?
No.
That's why I pushed for a transportation plan, to prevent those...
Well, I mean, I think if you were in a budget crisis, you would look at all options, and, I mean, I, I can see that.
The first step is saying no more.
Well, right.
And then the second step is, hey, you live on a private road, so we're gonna turn it over to you guys, and you guys can create your own association and take care of it.
I mean, I think, to me, if there were people who vão, who, like, if you had all the people on a cul-de-sac who said, nope, we want this road, then maybe that'd be something to take a look at. But I mean, trying to force somebody to do it, that's the harder part.
Right.
I, I don't know, I'd rather have the city building that road, I'd rather have them maintaining it. I'm a taxpayer, I mean, even for the folks who live on the south end of town here, I mean, we get a lot of calls from southward, and we tell them, well, you're in association, I mean, in the fullness of time, the city will probably have to take that project on. You know, and, and hopefully, none of us on the planning commission when that happens, but we know that that's gonna be a, a substantial overhaul, because a lot of those roads were built a little differently. And I'm not criticizing anybody, because we've got some good developers, but, you know, it just...
Don't criticize those roads, it's kinda...
Yes, very.
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna criticize it, but, I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, my first day I was here, I took the tour, on a little mini school bus with, with Mark and the other candidates, and we went down there, and we drove through there, and it was like, oh my gosh! Like, this is, uh, these are brand-new houses, they're being built on a road that's, you know, they're only five feet off of the road. You know, you can't even park a car in the driveway, and...
It was built to make money.
Oh, sure, right.
That's what it was. But it, it's, I even had to clear snow off of those roads, and it's horrible.
Yeah.
It is just horrible.
But we have stopped cul-de-sacs. We, the city hasn't built any that we have since Seven and a Half Street.
Sure.
I mean, once we got done with all the places in northwest, and we did Seven and a Half Street, we stopped, because every other cul-de-sac is a private... I mean, the one over on Twelve, off Twelve, that's private, and any other cul-de-sacs have been in an association since then.
That's true. So, yeah, I don't think the city would ever look building the cul-de-sacs.
No.
But you know where the last one? Is that the one out behind the school? Is that the one you're talking about? Isn't that the last one?
I think the last one was Seven and a Half Street, which is right by the Lutheran Church on eight, because first and second place had already been...
I'm talking the one...
Yeah, the one behind the football field.
Behind the football field, lamp posts.
Yeah, that one we just put in, but that was platted a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, that's the last one.
It was, and that's because it had nowhere to go, and they didn't...
And that one wasn't really built properly either.
No.
Because it's obviously not really a cul-de-sac, it's a mudhole, and we're working on that too.
Yeah, I don't think anybody wanted to do that one up in Casson Meadows, but it just, there was nowhere else, no, nothing else to do with that land. So you're right, that probably is the last one we did.
Seriously.
That's just curious.
Sure.
Yeah, it's...
Well, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's certainly something we could take a look at. I'm, I'm glad the city of Casson's not in that kind of financial shape, so that's good.
We're relying you, on you to keep us...
Well, we're making good progress. That beach house is gonna have to wait another year, Linda. That's all I've got.
Anything else, Sheldon? Go ahead and determine it. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.